Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of July 7th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers and City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The 2025 Water Quality Report is now available for public viewing. The city is committed to providing safe and reliable drinking water. The report details the testing and treatment processes that ensure our top water meets all federal and state regulations. View the report on the city's website. Celebrate the 150th anniversary of the Lee Summit Fire Department at a fun-filled open house on July 19th from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Fire Station #4 located at 5031 Northeast Lakewood Way. Bring the whole family to tour the fire station and walk through an inflatable house to learn about fire safety. Don't miss this opportunity to honor their legacy and join the celebration. And Jamaican Jam is back at Legacy Park Amphitheater on July 18th at 7:00 p.m. Enjoy the tunes of the islands for free without leaving Lee Summit. Find more details at rocktheamp.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
So many of our past successes were made possible by understanding the multitude of perspectives in our community. When we take the time to see the world through someone else's eyes, we enrich our own understanding and foster an environment where everyone can thrive. When I see the renovations we've made to our parks, I see an investment, not just in essential infrastructure, but in people. That builds community and directly impacts the physical and social well-being of our
I see equity, inclusive playgrounds where people from all walks of life can come together.
I see a place to play.
When I see the development we have helped facilitate in our community, I see the results of solution-oriented decision-making with job opportunities, easier access to goods and services, housing options, improved infrastructure, and increased economic growth.
I see projects created through collaboration between the city and developers that will provide value, benefit, and opportunity to the Lee Summit community.
I see growth in community and a way to connect more people to their food.
When I see the major road improvements underway, I see well-connected and safe transportation that enhances mobility and increases access to local businesses, spurring economic growth, safe deliveries to homes, and happy trips to ballgames and activities.
I see improved roadways, added sidewalks, and shared-use paths for pedestrians and cyclists. Safe transportation and recreation for all.
I see better connectivity, increased lanes, less congestion, and just make it easier to get around.
When I see the investments we've made in public safety, I see enhanced emergency preparedness and first responders who are ready on a moment's notice to protect the community and deliver immediate lifesaving care.
I see the city value its fire department employees come to fruition in recruitment, retention, and a positive culture.
I see a community that can respond to emergencies quickly. My whole family lives in Lee Summit, so there's a lot of peace of mind there.
What we do is not just about making decisions and funding budgets. It's about enriching the quality of life for all of our residents.
I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my term, I just felt like I had more to give.
It's about realizing that a building is not just steel and concrete, a park is not just
It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected
metal and ropes, a road is not just asphalt, and a city is not just land.
and working together. And I always called it a spirit of community.
It's about the experiences we provide to all people of all generations and backgrounds.
Well, mayor's 24/7, and I have a job.
Officers en route, 914 armed drug.
I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing, is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be a mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise. I like to work out. Hillary's my wife. She actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well, and we spend a lot of time with them, or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on, and we're growing fairly quickly, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure, and we've always managed to get by, but with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads, and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here, and there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some, you know, well-paying jobs here, good, strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee Summit to go to work. And it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house!
He's the mayor!
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown Farmer's Market, when we bought the land, and it became real, you know? All that hard work. But also the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have, and we went ahead and moved forward as a council altogether, and I was very, very proud of that. And there are a few things that the citizens have done that have really helped us tremendously. First, in the middle of a pandemic, they passed a use tax, which is a way for us to collect sales tax whenever someone purchases online. That helps shore up our revenues so that we can continue providing those high-quality services that our city provides. And it helps us take care of our employees. It helps us with our public safety and more. So I can't be more thankful to the citizens for that. Lee Summit has the opportunity to have a major impact on the economy in the Kansas City area. We already, as an economy, are rolling along with such a high median income. We have an amazing workforce here that are paying taxes. They're paying property taxes. They're paying sales taxes. They're keeping our economy rolling, and we really are getting the attention of all our neighbors. And I think that what's going to happen is you're going to see the opportunity for us to really get everybody's attention when businesses start moving here, bigger businesses and more. You should try to find a way to give back to the community, whether it's at the city level, citizen committees, or just participating in some of our community conversations whenever we have those opportunities. It's worth coming out of your shell or taking that leap of faith and just showing up and saying, "What can I do?" Or "How can I help?" The more that we do this together, the more wonderful the community is.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please? Okay, so we will start with the presentation from the applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Caleb Phillips of the law firm Spencer Fain, appearing today on behalf of North Star Healthcare Income, Inc., doing business as Solstice Senior Living, which is located at 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue. I just wanted to say we appreciate the staff and your support tonight. Solstice Senior Living has been operating without incident for 20 years and will continue to do so. I have with me tonight Tasha Allen, who's here to answer any operational questions you may have. That's the beginning and end of my presentation. Appreciate you listening to me and listening to her answer any of your questions. Just basically request approval of the 20-year renewal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Soto?
Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 10th, 2025. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens. Sherri Fraser. Jake Lovelace.
Carrie Trafton.
Dana Arth. Jessica Grenau. Tonya Johniford.
Chip Tuzinski.
Randy Benbrook.
Thank you. Before we move on, if anyone here is for the meeting on the Douglas improvements, that's down the hall in the Struther Conference Room. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have anybody here that was expecting to talk about that. Looks like everybody's wanting to be here. So we'll move on to a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Can we get a second?
I second, Chair.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes, approved.
Carrie Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have one person to make public comments. Ms. Volin-Weider, do you want to come to the microphone, please? We have a three-minute time limit. If someone can set the clock for that, please.
Can somebody switch that thing around so that I'm not having to think in reverse? Because I think it's set up so that I would be standing here talking this way to people.
Make sure you state your name and address.
That's what I mean. If I put it this way, it's like I have to think about, okay, if I have it over here, and then I'm going to talk to you all, but I'm supposed to be helping you all. And it's hard to think in reverse to always get that thing set right, so you're spending all your time trying to do that. There we go. I'll be sure to ask for that every time.
Teresa Volin-Weider, 5201 Northeast Maybrook Road. I've been doing some research into the public records, and I start developing questions as to why is this so? Because it seems like things are not being applied equally to every landowner, especially people that are in areas I think that they like to call leapfrog development, those of us that have acreages, et cetera. This particular thing that I found, I was at this meeting, and it was for Jaclyn Maloney. And she had a property that ended up requiring to be platted. And the reason for that was she had a meets and bounds description. And meets and bounds descriptions, according to the ordinance here in Lee Summit, requires a plat to be done and to be recorded before any building permits can be issued or before the property can be sold. And this was done by a 20-year veteran here, Hector Soto. So I've got to figure he knows what he's doing. There's the Article VII subdivisions. There it is, right there. But yet, when you come to another property, this was sold. It was sold back in 1999, and according to Hector Soto, this occurred in 1976, that you, once you had a meets and bounds description, you had to plat the property. So here, 1999, this same property was sold to Doug Horn. He, you know, no plat, to my knowledge, was recorded. I can't find anything. And then this particular, this is a meets and bounds description, folks. Yet... Let's start out with this one. November 12th of 2014, Doug Horn was able to get a building permit for a barn, for a property-owned ag that was not platted.
Ms. Volins-Meyer, the time is up. I'm sorry, I mispronounced.
Okay. I just want to show you, 2019, we had it again. Same meets and bounds description, and a building permit was issued.
Okay, thank you.
And then this one...
We really need to move on with the meeting. We've got a very full agenda.
Okay. But I just want to show, I mean, this is frustrating because...
I know, but...
The address got transposed.
Is this a presentation you made Tuesday to the city council?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been on the record now twice. We really have to move on.
But I think you all need to know about this because these are getting through.
We do know.
You know, these required rezoning, and you all approved them, but yet you didn't say anything about, hey...
I have to take over the meeting now. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Unless there's any more public comments, okay. We've got item, application PL 2025-105, final plat, Oldham Parkway Shopping Center, lots 3A through 3E, RH Johnson Company applicant. And then we've got the second item, approval of the June 12th, 2025 Planning Commission action letter. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please?
Sherri Fraser.
Yes.
Carrie Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, we will move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. First item is application PL 2025-110, special use permit renewal for retirement home, Solstice Senior Living, 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue, North Star Healthcare Income, Inc. applicant. Would anybody here that's planning to give testimony or speak on this application, please stand up and be sworn in at this time? Okay, so we will start with the presentation from the applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Caleb Phillips of the law firm Spencer Fain, appearing today on behalf of North Star Healthcare Income, Inc., doing business as Solstice Senior Living, which is located at 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue. I just wanted to say we appreciate the staff and your support tonight. Solstice Senior Living has been operating without incident for 20 years and will continue to do so. I have with me tonight Tasha Allen, who's here to answer any operational questions you may have. That's the beginning and end of my presentation. Appreciate you listening to me and listening to her answer any of your questions. Just basically request approval of the 20-year renewal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Soto?
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., senior planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Please enter Exhibit A 1 through 14 into the record.
So as has just been stated, the application before use for special use permit renewal for a period of 20 years for the existing Solstice retirement community at the southeast corner, southwest corner of Independence Avenue and Tudor Road. Here's the images display the existing zoning in the area. You've got the subject site in the middle outlined in yellow, surrounded by single-family uses to the northwest, multifamily directly to the north and to the west, duplex development to the south, and you've got some church uses that make up that northeast quadrant of the intersection, and you've got Walmart and surrounding pad sites to the south and to the southeast and to the direct east. The image on the right just gives you a clearer image of what I just described here without the zoning layer on it. So for those that are not familiar with the site, the site is just under five acres. It's in total about just under 111,000 square feet of gross floor area. The main building that has kind of more...
The time, Ms. Volins Meyer, the time is up. I'm sorry, I mispronounced.
Okay. I just want to show you, in 2019, we had it again. Same meets and bounds description, and a building permit was issued.
Okay, thank you.
And then this one.
We really need to move on with the meeting. We've got a very full agenda.
Okay. But I just want to show, I mean, this is frustrating because
I know, but
the address got transposed.
Is this a presentation you made Tuesday to City Council?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's been on the record now twice. We really have to move on.
But I think you all need to know about this, because these are getting through.
We do know.
You know, these required rezoning, and you all approved them, but yet you didn't say anything about, hey.
I have to, I have to take over the meeting now. Thank you. All right. So, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Unless there's any more public comments. Okay. We've got item, application PL 2025-105, final plat, Oldham Parkway Shopping Center, lots 3A through 3E, RH Johnson Company applicant. And then we've got the second item, approval of the June 12th, 2025 Planning Commission action letter. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote, please?
Sherri Frazier.
Yes.
Terri Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. First item is application PL 2025-110, special use permit renewal for retirement home. Solstice Senior Living, 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue, North Star Healthcare Income, Inc., applicant. Would anybody here that's planning to give testimony or speak on this application, please stand up and be sworn in at this time? Okay. So, we will start with the presentation from the applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Caleb Phillips of the law firm Spencer Fain, appearing today on behalf of North Star Healthcare Income, Inc., doing business as Solstice Senior Living, which is located at 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue. I just wanted to say we appreciate the staff and your support tonight. Solstice Senior Living has been operating without incident for 20 years and will continue to do so. I have with me tonight Tasha Allen, who's here to answer any operational questions you may have. That's the beginning and end of my presentation. Appreciate you listening to me and listening to her answer any of your questions. Just basically request approval of the 20-year renewal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Soto.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Please enter Exhibit A 1 through 14 into the record.
So, as has just been stated, the application before use for special use permit renewal for a period of 20 years for the existing Solstice retirement community at the southeast corner, southwest corner of Independence Avenue and Tudor Road. Here's the images display the existing zoning in the area. You've got the subject site in the middle outlined in yellow, surrounded by single-family uses to the northwest, multifamily directly to the north and to the west, duplex development to the south. And you've got some church uses that make up that northeast quadrant of the intersection. And you've got Walmart and surrounding pad sites to the south, to the south and to the, to the southeast and to the direct east. The image on the right just gives you a clearer image of what I just described here without the zoning layer on it. So, for those that are not familiar with the site, the site is just under five acres. It's in total about just under 111,000 square feet of gross floor area. The main building that has kind of more of a serpentine or seahorse configuration has 118 dwelling units composed of a three stories, pitched roof, all the units, I believe every single one of the units has partially covered balcony. The two buildings that you see right at the hard corner, the northernmost building is a three-plex, a three-unit cottage, single-story, and the building to the meet at south is a, is a two-unit, single-story cottage. The images here are going to walk you through and depict what the existing architectural style. So, you can see pitched roof, as I mentioned, covered or semi-covered patio areas and elevated decks. Here on that, well, I guess moving clockwise, we've got the view from the intersection of Tudor and Independence Avenue of those cottage-style homes. This particular view would be of the three, of the three-plex. On that southwest corner, I guess if we continue moving counterclockwise or clockwise, rather, you do see some images kind of depicting what the grounds look like. This image depicts what the grounds are like in the courtyard area on the west side of the building where it abuts the apartments to the west. As you can see, they have some, some internal trails. You've got raised gardens. You've got a number of benches, pretty well landscaped area. So, there's plenty of open space, kind of invites the residents to be able to enjoy the grounds. The image here, the final image here on the south, on your lower left-hand corner, is the view from Tudor Road, looking south where it abuts the apartments. And that's just kind of to depict the existing type of landscape buffer that currently exists, separating that use from the apartments to the west. And similarly, on the far end, you have similar landscaped area, pretty well-treed with a six-foot vinyl fence to provide that buffer between this use and the abutting uses. The UDO does have some use conditions associated with a senior living facility or retirement facility. All of them are basically kind of more spatially related to ensure that there's a certain amount of separation and open space based on the number of tenants and in order to ensure that there is an abundant amount of open space and green areas for residents to enjoy. They are in compliance, they were in compliance with all of those requirements back in 2002, and they continue to be compliant. Our standards in that regard have not changed since 2002. We have just one condition of approval, and that is that staff is recommending approval of a special use permit to be granted for additional 12 years from the date of the prior expiration. So, this would mean that if approved, this current 20-year SEP would expire November 21st of 2042. So, with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Hector, did you say, did you mean to say 20 years, not 12?
Oh, did I say something else? Oh, 20. Sorry. I didn't enunciate.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. I will ask for questions from the commission, and I guess we'll start here. If you have a question, just, okay. Ms. Frazier.
Was the prior special use permit for 20 years as well?
It was.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafton, do you have any questions?
I'm just curious. The current one expired a couple of years ago? Is that right?
It would have been November of '22, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to clarify. Do we know the reason why there was such a lapse and why it didn't get caught before now?
I'll put that on staff. We've had some changing, some of the way we've been tracking some of these special use permits. And this one happened to be that I actually caught it on, we periodically get letters for zoning confirmation in some of the background. It typically happens when there's an exchange, a sale of property as part of the due diligence process. And doing some background research on this property came around and came to find that the SEP had expired a little bit more than two years ago.
I mean, is the onus somewhat on the owner of the property to make sure that they comply with this ordinance?
Yeah, it's a shared responsibility.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just curious. Okay, thanks. I appreciate you taking responsibility for it, though. Thanks.
Well, I would imagine also when ownership changes, sometimes if ownership changes, that can happen as well, to fall through the cracks. But, well, I do have a question. I'm trying to get a connection so I can see the packet, but I can't get it. So, I'm, I think it was in there. That's okay. I don't have time to read it all. Just bug Hector. I'll just bug you, and you can answer it. So, what is the reason for special use permit for a senior living? Is it just, that's what our UDO requires? Or is there a special reason behind it?
You typically would see special events for those types of uses that could have a negative effect on surrounding areas. You would, might be a little bit hard-pressed to think that these types of facilities would have a negative effect on surrounding areas. Now, typically, and again, I wasn't here when that verbiage was, you know, instituted. One of the few things that predates, you know, my tenure with the city. But you would often find a tie between the uses, the use conditions associated with it. And all the ones that are here, I kind of more, what I would say are probably more quality-of-life type of associations, where there's looking to find insurance of a certain amount of open space or minimum lot size. So, my best guess is it was, they're probably more tied to trying to ensure that there's a certain amount of quality-of-life characteristics with the development and that they be maintained, if I were to guess. But again, that's just be conjecture on my part.
So, maybe even with the residents there, possibly. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a follow-up, Chair. And I'm not sure if this is the right portion to ask this. So, when you say retirement home, I'm wondering if there are different levels of skilled nursing and
Yes, there
Is this the right?
There are. So, as it's used in our ordinance.
Elevator. Sorry, I'll just have a follow-up question. So, we've had a lot of discussion over the last couple of weeks about elevators. And is there an elevator, even though this is only three stories, is there an elevator in this one? Because I know it's not required until
Um, I don't
Okay.
Yes. So, now I
But I was asking about the different levels of care.
Yes. So, our ordinance is currently written has kind of more of an umbrella term. So, it doesn't, understanding that there are, there is a continuum of care, I mean, you have facilities that independent, semi-independent assisted living to memory care. Ours just kind of just has one umbrella term.
Okay.
So, it captures those different types of facilities. This one is an independent living facility, although they do have the ability to contract residents, individual residents have the ability to contract to procure some additional assisted services with the help of the facility. But in and of itself, it is, it is essentially an independent living facility in this case.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I didn't see anybody who had a question on there, did I? Okay. All right. We will close public hearing on this.
Chair, did you open up for anybody in the audience? I don't recall you did.
No, I didn't. I didn't. Do we have any comments from the audience on this one? Nope.
Can I ask one question?
Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Oh, have you, did you get sworn in?
No.
Okay. Can we swear her in?
Yes. I was just asking if this is turning it from independent living to an assisted living? If that, is that what's happening here?
No. Hector, do you want to explain it better, or do you want me to explain? I guess what we have is, they get a permit for, normally a business gets a permit, and they don't have to renew it. But in this case, they have to renew it, and it doesn't change the what, how they do business. It's just, it changes their, it gives them the ability to continue doing business. Is that, unless the business model has changed, but that's not tied to this SUP. Is that a good explanation?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, do we have any comments or, okay.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to say, I've been to this facility inside and out. I've visited many people here. It's always clean and well-maintained on the outside and inside. So, I'm grateful for this facility and our, our community. And I know there's other communities that people move from to that facility because they don't have one in their, in their area. So, I just want to say I'm grateful for the ownership and the way they upkeep the property and the services they provide. Thank you.
Nobody? Nobody? I guess I would like to say, as a, I have a mother in a, in one of the communities in Lee Summit. And I was looking at this. It looks like a really nice community. And I think we have a lot of need for them. And I just remember in the old days, visiting my aunt in a nursing home, and it was horrible. So, to have places like this where even, even though this is mostly independent living, it's just, they're very nice communities. And I think they do, I think unless they're poorly run, they probably don't have a problem hurting the quality of life for people. But I understand that we have to do the SUP on it. But I guess if nobody has anybody, anything else, we'll look for a motion on this or to
I have just one other.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry.
I just want to comment further also that in listening to, to what we'll consider attainable housing, affordable housing, and the housing needs and wants in, in Lee Summit and surrounding communities, situations like this are very needed, especially for the 55, there's a request and a need for the, what we call senior living or the 55 and older, for independent living. So, appreciated, have driven by there many times, and it's aesthetically pleasing, it's green, and that's important. That's important.
Yeah. Okay. I guess we're ready to take a vote on this after we get a motion.
Yes, Chair. I move to recommend granting of a special use permit renewal for retirement home in District CP2 on land located at 1088 Northeast Independence Avenue for a period of 20 years from the previous expiration date, all in accordance with Article VI of the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Second.
Okay. Can we get a vote on that or roll call vote, please?
Sherri Frazier.
Yes.
Terri Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right. That is, the motion has passed, and we will move on to the next application. PL 2025-052, Preliminary Development Plan, Toddco Beverages, 1270 Southeast Century Drive, Engineering Solutions applicant. Would everyone who plans on speaking on behalf of this application, please stand up and be sworn in at this time? All right. We're ready for the
All right.
Presentation.
Good evening. Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. With me tonight, I have members of the architectural crew. I have a member of the ownership of the business. So, I think we can answer hopefully anything that comes about. The project generally located at Bailey and Century Hamblin'. So, it's kind of that area where as you're going down Bailey, if you go north, it's Century. If you go south, you go Hamblin' down towards the city facilities. It's an existing vacant lot that Toddco currently owns the building just to the north of it, and they're wanting to expand their industry and add another building on the south side of it. It's in an area that is in the Ignite comp plan as a mixed-use. Currently, it's zoned in the industrial zoned district. It's in the area that used to be a metal building allowed area. And then now that the codes have changed, we're here tonight because we're going to try to discuss the architectural elements of the building. From a site perspective, it generally complies with everything, or does comply with everything in the code side of it. So, as we talked about, to the north side is the existing facility. There's an existing drive that comes off of Century. This is the KC Dumpster Group, and then this is just an industrial building. The idea being Bailey is on the south side of the facility, existing ditch kind of on the southwest side. Access will be coming off existing drive to the north. The proposal is for a 12,600-square-foot building, mixture of office and warehouse, outdoor storage in a fenced-in area on the southerly side, and then onsite parking kind of circle the north and the east side of the building with one dock high door on the northwest corner of the site. From a landscaping perspective, the outdoor area was placed on the south side to try to create some separation from Bailey up to the building, create an area where we could landscape along Bailey Road, leaving the existing vegetation at the southwest corner, providing the privacy fence along the outdoor screened area. So, our opinion would be, as you're driving down Bailey, you're going to see a landscaped fenced-in area, and the building would be off to the distant side. Again, then landscaping off the existing drive where the parking will be located. Mixture of evergreens, deciduous trees, and shrubs throughout the entire to create a continuous screen on the south side, and then create some added screening up along the parking lot areas on the north. From a building elevation perspective, as we talked about, it's the percentages of metal panels. And so, I'm going to kind of go through it just on the percent side of it. But the architect's here to go through any of the elevation-specific materials. But generally, it's a classification, or a difference of materials of different colors of metal panels, different textures of metal panels, and some mixture of brick uses throughout the site. So, this would be the north elevation that would be facing the existing Toddco facility with Bailey Road being on the backside of that one. So, this would be the view then on the Bailey roadside. But again, six-foot privacy fence with landscaping on the southerly side of it. So, that should shield and soften most of the doors where you'll see a majority of the upper reaches. Again, a mixture of different metal panel colors, different metal panel textures, and then as well as some of the stone elements to bring in. Then we're looking at the east and the west elevation. So, the west elevation would be the elevation that would be looking towards the ditch or the west side of the site where there's just existing backs of development. And then the east side of it would be what is going towards KC Dumpster or an existing facility on that side. For perspective, to kind of understand what's out there, it's a, as we said, kind of a, it was a metal building area. So, prior to the change in the code, a lot of metal panels, two-tone color side of it, outdoor storage areas that didn't have quite the screening, just with, you know, ours will have a privacy fence that will be completely opaque with lancy up in the outside of it. But again, you're seeing just metal panels. This is to the north side of us. They started losing a little bit of a textured metal panel. But again, consistent colors, maybe a different colored parapet. And then this is the KC Dumpster next to us. Again, just kind of a similar color with one accent tone to where ours will have three different color panels, textured panels, and some stone mixes into that side of it. Again, this is the adjacent property kind of to the south and east of our site. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. No one did attend. So, again, we're here for any questions. We have everybody else to answer any questions I might have missed for you.
All right. Good evening. Claire Byers, Senior Planner. Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 12.
Exhibit A 1 through 12, and please enter those into the record.
The applicant requests approval of a preliminary development plan to allow for the construction of a warehouse office space with rear outdoor storage. A PDP is not required for development of property in the planned industrial zoning district, provided no modifications are requested. However, since the applicant is requesting a modification to exterior building facade regulations, this process was triggered. The site is zoned planned industrial and within the east side business park. The surrounding properties are all industrial developed, including warehousing and outdoor storage uses. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan identifies mixed use as the recommended future land use category. This designation is intended to accommodate a mix of retail, office, service, and public uses. With a mix of retail and business park type of uses may also be mixed in where appropriate. The applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on May 27th. No members of the public attended, and staff has not received No members of the public attended and staff has not received any comments, emails or phone calls in favor or opposition. The preliminary development plan application meets all development requirements of the U D O aside from the modification request. Here's another look at the landscape plan with a mixture of evergreen and deciduous tree species. The existing vegetation within that stream buffer in the southwest corner will remain. So the applicant is seeking a modification to U D O Section 8.170 pertaining to permitted building materials for industrial buildings. The proposed exterior elevations exceed the forty percent maximum usage of metal allowed by right and range from fifty-seven up to a hundred percent metal. Here are the proposed exterior elevations featuring metal wall panels in three different colors, concrete blocks and textured walls, as well as canopy lighting above the entryways. And then here are those east and west side elevations. So the proposed elevations are compatible with neighboring development as the area was previously within the metal building overlay. The surrounding properties are all developed with similar uses, including outdoor storage and are within an established industrial building park. Additionally, proposed building is oriented towards the north of the site near the private drive instead of along the southern southeast Bailey Drive frontage. The view from the right of way would be primarily of the landscaping as well as the six foot tall privacy fence required within the storage. So with the conditions of approval as outlined here and in the staff letter, application meets the goals of the Comprehensive Plan in the U D O. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Do we have any comments from the public on this application? All right, so we will move on to...
I have.
Okay.
I need to be sworn in.
My question in watching the presentations on this is that Matthew Schlisch, when he did his presentation, he did show his plans with the seal and his signature and a date there. But when the city does their presentation, they always seem to knock that whole side of the picture off. It's like they blow it up and they cut it off. They, they use a snippet instead of the entire page of the plan.
Ms. Bollin-Weider, is this, do you have a comment or a question about this application separate, just particularly about this application?
That's my question, why it's presented like that?
That's more of a public comment thing and related to the general business of the Planning Commission, not, not, not germane to this application.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll say that I do appreciate that Matthew Schlisch actually had a sealed document there.
All right, thank you. Do we have, I'm going to start here with your side if you have questions.
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Trafton?
Uh, thank you. I think my question is for the applicant. Um, I'm curious about the, you guys have that dock bay on the west side of the building. And it looks like, like I'm curious about, did you study like the, I'm sure you did because I know you, you do this stuff, but um, the turning radius for like, I don't know how big of a truck you guys are going to be pushing into that dock bay. But I was, it looks like it's pretty tight back there, but I can't really see it clear.
Yeah, and so with Toddco currently utilizing this facility where they currently use a dock drop off area or dock pickup area, we'll have the entire turning elements up in this entire area to get back.
That's like a parking lot?
Uh huh.
I couldn't tell.
It's all paved and then the building is sitting probably another 25 feet north of our picture up in there.
Gotcha.
So uh, let's see, I don't think I have a better picture of it. But yeah, so the idea is yes, that you can come in, you can swing up and pull in. And then they currently are parking and backing into the docks on the existing building in there as well.
Right. And then like the orientation of the door to the truck that's backed in there? Is there like a way, like it doesn't look like it lines up to the door? You know, like normally you'd load into the back of a truck, but it looks like you'd be loading sideways or something?
Yeah, I think.
How big of a truck are they?
Yeah, so I think the idea is, is you'd have a dock high area and then your entry is there on the side. You said you have an elevated platform in order to unload and then be able to move in and out of the facility into that overhead door area.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And then how big of the truck, how big trucks, how big are the trucks going to be?
I'll let the owner comment on the size of trucks that you guys have utilized, come to your site.
Our personal trucks.
You'll have to come up here.
Can you come, yeah.
Like drop off trucks. So name and address first.
Todd Sexton, you want my address?
Yes, please.
7027 Del Webb Oak Creek Boulevard, North Fort Myers, Florida.
Okay. Hey, we're jealous of you in the winter.
Our personal trucks are just pickup trucks and trailers, but we do have 57 foot semi trucks that make deliveries there.
Oh, okay. So the big ones?
Yes.
The big ones will be going in there. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benbrook?
Uh, yeah, thank you Chair. For the applicant, I guess Mr. Schlitt, you'd be probably up, up to speed on my questions. First of all, you said dock height. Is there a dock here? Or are they going to be using a lift on the back of a truck to drop these pallets off? Because I'm not seeing anything that says dock.
Yeah, so I think on our plans we'll have the dock there. I believe yes, the answer is we're still putting a dock on, yes, short answer is yes. We're putting a dock on this west end that they would drop downgrade to put it at dock high. So 42 inches up, 48 inches.
The recess dock?
Correct, going downgrade, yep.
Okay, so it'll ramp down?
Yeah, so I think the elevation's missing the drop portion in there that would show it, but yes.
Okay, okay. Secondly, what is the reason for not meeting the requirement on the masonry on the facades, on the elevations?
So I think it's, it's the conversation of where we are in the city. You know, so out in that area as we start to improve the pre-metal or the, the metal building areas of the city and start to in, grow that. An industrial client such as this needs to have a financially feasible building and project to go forward. And so as we've moved forward, we think we've started that process of converting from, you know, where we were here, where our neighbors are all metal buildings, one consistent color on that side of it, to where this is presenting itself with a mixture of colors that we think's helped to add some of that architectural elements in that area to start to upgrade some of that. But if you start to look at the area, Century, Broadway, all of the streets in that area, all this consistent metal building, if you go south, it's consistent metal building. So I think it's more the intent, we believe, is being met by using some architectural changes in the colors, some of the materials and providing three different options out there. And the stone was just kind of that mixer, that accent side of it. So that's kind of how I think the idea went. But certainly the architect's here to present any more discussion in there if need be.
Okay, well, who's up to speed on the top, type of panel being used?
Hey, Commissioner Benbrook, I, do you want to come up here, Amy, and talk about something to, about the process with the metal that we are, we're in the middle of right now and why this is even before us?
Sure. Good evening, Amy Nassif, Deputy Director of Development. Um, so this evening, so this development that came in, actually our previous code requirement, as many of you know, had that this area that this building is in allowed a hundred percent use of metal on all facades. So actually in our previous code version back just from last year, this would just be done administratively by staff. When we were, knowing we were in process with the architecture code updates, that will be presented to you in 27 minutes. Um, there was going to be some updates made to this. But right now during the interim time, in working with the city council, we all recommended and had on their books right now that you can meet the metal, you can use metal up to forty percent. If you go beyond that, up to seventy-five percent, just go to Planning Commission and beyond that would be city council. Um, the city just wanted to have a tiered system in place in the interim while we worked out what our final architecture requirements for the use of metal in like the specific area would be. So in the future, what's going to be coming is cleaning up all of our architecture requirements. This area, actually the metal building area is going to be put back in. But also to include that three different kind of types of architectural, I'd say accents or interests would be used because we wanted to stay away from the flat four sided, just all metal, but have some kind of interests or different materials with it. Um, and this project actually, if I'm not wrong, and you can stop me if I am, if I am wrong, um, this would meet our new architecture code requirements if you all recommend approval of that in 27 minutes. So um, I hope that helps or doesn't make things a little worse or anything.
Did you find that helpful, Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, to assert next step.
He's still not done asking questions though.
Yeah, no, we still ask questions, but just from a process standpoint. They are technically meeting code, it's just to meet code right now. They need your approval and city councils for this amount that they want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so...
Your other panel.
Yeah.
Panel discussion, let me flip over.
Panel discussion, okay. So are these uh...
Baylor's going to come up and help me with that one, so.
Okay. What type of panels are we using? Are these an insulated panel? Are they an impact resistant panel? Are they a cheap gauge panel? What are they?
Uh, Baylor Reimler, 1512 South McCoy Street, Independence. Yep. So this would just be like a standard pre-manufactured half inch metal panel, including the corrugation. I think the total would be two inches thick. So this would be, that one to one and a half inch would be to the exterior phase to the top of the corrugation.
Mounted to purlins, metal purlins, I'm assuming?
Yep, standard P and B, primary structure, and these would attach directly to, so.
Okay. I'll save the rest for comments. Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, my only question is for the applicant here. And it's really just to give a little bit of explanation of what you're going to use for outdoor storage, what that space is going to be used for. Yes, what are you going to use the outdoor storage for? Like what are you going to store outside?
The outdoor storage?
Yes, it's, I mean, backs up to Bailey Road, I believe.
Uh, the outdoor storage is just our vehicles and trailers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We, we have nothing else outside.
Sir, what's your name?
He did it for us.
Todd Sexton. You want to know where I live again?
Thank you ma'am chairman.
Okay, all right, so anything else? All right, I guess we will either ask for a motion or comments, whichever comments, okay.
Thank you Chair. Um, so to continue my, my panel discussion, this building sits right along Bailey, right? Which feeds a ton of neighborhoods back in there, which is only developing more, right? Cutting in new neighborhoods as it is. Um, I have a real problem with cheap architectural panels meeting the ground because they get beat up whether it's in a warehouse situation or whether it's in a commercial situation. Um, they get trash from snow removal, trucks hit them. Um, I didn't see any bollards around the corner where you wrap in a corner during a heavy traffic area. So I'm very concerned about the upkeep of the building as, as we, as it goes into use and as snow removal's being activated back there. So it'll be interesting to hear the presentation coming in 27 minutes. Because I'm, I'm a firm believer that you need to get the metal panel off the ground if the building's going to last and continue to look decent. So I do have issue with, with the elevations as they are. It's mostly there. I, I see we've got some, some stone or some CMU block around the majority of the north and south elevation. I, I guess I don't understand why they're showing metal panel on, on the delivery side because that's going to get even beat up more with pallet jacks and hand trucks and everything else flowing in and out of there. So I'm a little concerned there how that's going to hold up. But there's a screen wall, so I could somewhat understand that. But I do have an issue with the elevations. I don't like it as it is. I know they're, they're trying to meet a, a future code. And I can appreciate that and then working with the staff, but I do have a, a concern. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, Commissioner Benbrook. Commissioner Tuzinski?
No comments.
Okay.
Does the, does the existing business, can you tell me how, how many? Just comments, okay. I'll wait, I'll wait.
Commissioner Trafton, do you have comments? Yeah, did you have a comment, Commissioner Frazier?
Be questioned toward.
Do we need to reopen public hearing for the question? Can we do that?
If it's a question over a new topic, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If it's a question over a new topic, yes.
Is it a new topic?
It requires the testimony, so.
Okay, but it's not, so we'll continue with comments. Commissioner Trafton?
Um, I was just going to say, I mean, I, I understand Commissioner Benbrook's concerns. Actually, it makes a lot of sense. Although I do have to say I appreciate the intent and effort to upgrade the building, especially since it is going to be on Bailey. There's lots of school traffic over and up and down Bailey now because of all the school, the, the middle school over there and the high school fields. So um, you know, and I, and I can always appreciate and thank you for upgrading the landscaping and the buffer and the, um, the fence and all the things that you guys added to, to the, you know, make it look aesthetically pleasing as you drive by. So that'll be nice and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I would just echo what Commissioner Trafton said. I think it looks really nice. I think you've done a nice job making it look not so boxy and, and metal-y. I guess that's the word. So with that said, I guess I am ready for someone to make a motion on this.
Ma'am Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion to recommend approval of preliminary development plan for land located at 1270 Southeast Century Drive for Toddco, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 of the Unified Development Ordinance or of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
I'll second.
Hold on one second. Are... I guess, are we skipping a, a section of, it, it's going to the ordinances, but is there normally another section for the motion for planning? Or am I imagining that? Like a recommending of approval?
Yeah, the motion should be recommended approval on the preliminary development plan. The ordinance that's included in your packet is for reference only. So you're not making a motion on the ordinance, you're making the motion on the PDP.
And we're not discussing provisions of Chapter 33 or any of that, correct?
Correct. So it's going to be Item B, um, application. And you're going to recommend approval for that.
Yeah, did, is, I, I didn't, I'm not sure, did you say recommend approval of, okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just for clarification, if we could just get clarification on your motion and that way we're clear for the record.
All right. Ma'am Chairman, let me try that again.
Okay.
Um, I would like to recommend approval of application number PL 2025-052 Preliminary Development Plan Toddco Beverages, 1270 Southeast Century Drive, Engineering Solutions applicant.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, can we get a vote, a roll call vote on that, please?
Cherry Frazier?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenau?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
No.
All right. We will move on, before we move on to the next application, because I have a new member here and I want to make sure, are you comfortable with what you will be reading when you do a motion? You have, you have that piece, okay, okay. You feel good about it too, on the motion part? Okay. I just want to make sure everybody was comfortable with it. All right. So we will move on to our next application. PL 2025-058 Rezoning from Ag to R1, 3609 Southwest Prior Road, 3613 Southwest Prior Road, 3699 Southwest Prior Road, 3620 Southwest Crane Road and two abutting unaddressed parcels. Michael King and Richard McMillan applicants. So if anyone who is planning to give testimony on this application, you would please stand up, be sworn in at this time.
Yes.
Okay. So do we have a presentation? Okay, so do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Let me get this going.
I'll just close this out real quick before you speak. All right, go ahead.
My name's Richard McMillan, I'm a co-applicant Mike King, and basically, this is a pretty simple deal, my address.
Can we get your, oh, okay.
My address 2101 Pagani Avenue, Henderson, Nevada.
Oh, you're from a long ways away.
Anyway, basically, I've owned a property over in this area, Grand Summit View subdivision, which is right at the, pretty much at the corner of 150 and Prior Road, was platted in the 60s, and it's all still zoned Ag, even though that's a nonconforming zoning for the size of lots in there. I've owned my hat, one of my houses there for quite a few years, there was a house next door to me, the one that was, shows this lot, going to future lot 2A on this plat, that had a house that was abandoned for a number of years, Mike King, no offense, on it, it was kinda dumb enough to buy it. Not, I don't think he understood the problems that existed in the existing zoning and whatever, but anyway, we each own a house, there was a vacant lot in between, and with the survey, we each owned half of a lot, half of that lot, in addition to what we had, can't build out onto it or anything, because it's not part of our lot, so our original goal was try to replat and make each one of our lots include the half lot that we each owned, and make it bigger, that opened the whole can of worms of nonconforming zoning, they asked us to rezone, so we threw in the other two properties we owned, he owned another property in that area as well as I did, so we threw all that into the zoning application, kinda, you know, to defer the cost of it over different lots, and if you look at that, you can sort of see that where his house is the one on the bottom, mine's the one on the top, and we had those two half lots in between, and they were just nonusable, so we're trying to incorporate it into our existing lots, zoning is just something that's required to do this, so that's, hence the zoning application.
Okay, okay, so we will talk, I guess staff will give their presentation, Ms. Byers will come up here again.
All right, Claire Byers, Senior Planner, please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of exhibits one through 12.
Exhibit A, one through 12, please enter that into the record.
So the primary purpose for the applicant's request to rezone the six total properties from Ag to R1 is to be able to apply for the minor plat, to replat the two unaddressed parcels outlined in red, to create two total larger lots for the north and the south parcel. The secondary purpose for the request is to utilize the development standards that reflect the single-family residential nature versus that existing Ag standard, that's really more tailored to 10-plus acre lot sizes. The Grand Summit View neighborhood was configured prior to annexation in 1964 and the adoption of the UDO. The developed lots are considered legally nonconforming, and no changes to the existing dwellings or site alterations outside of that minor plat request are proposed. Subject properties are zoned Ag and loaded, located northeast of the intersection of Southwest Prior Road and Southwest 150 Highway, surrounding lots are zoned Ag and R1. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan identifies the subject area as Residential 1, this category is primarily for single-family developments that range from very low-density rural residential with even farming activity to medium and large lot single-family subdivisions. The subject properties range from 20,000 to 35,000 square feet in size, and with a total density of 1.34 dwelling units per acre, are can, very consistent with the Residential 1 designation that exists. The applicant's hosted a neighborhood meeting on May 29, seven members of the public attended, and according to the meeting notes, it was primarily neighbors discussing the rezoning process, and staff has not received any comments, emails, or phone calls in favor or opposition. The requested rezoning to R1 is an appropriate and compatible district for the area, as the subject properties are already developed and actually already meeting all R1 standards. With the conditions of approval outlined here and in the staff letter, the application meets the goals of the Comprehensive Plan and UDO. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments regarding this application? Ms. Volin-Wider, yes, I said your name right this time.
What is the zoning exhibit, that rezoning exhibit?
This one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that is the, I'm sorry, that's part of the.
It was called the zoning exhibit.
Okay, I wanna make sure you didn't need what the applicant had.
I pulled this up on my phone, and it's by a, a surveyor, it's not signed and sealed, but it says, they call it a zoning exhibit, and I tried to find this Paula McMillan that you see on that lower corner, it's not Paula McMillan, it's Paul A. McMillan.
No, it's Paula, it's supposed to be Paula.
So is it wrong in the county records?
Probably.
Oh my God.
Chairman, I'd remind you that this is a period to interact with the commission and not the audience.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, I guess nobody, nobody looked up the deeds, because this deed was, I looked it up because I wanted to see, is that the, the unplatted piece there, is that the one that has the meets and bounds description that's mentioned on the zoning exhibit? And it is, so I'm unclear as to why that would not need to be.
This isn't, I, I understand you have a question about that, but it's not really germane to this application, your, your back.
Yes, it, yeah, I think it is, I think because it needs to be platted.
I would like Mr. Buschak to comment on that.
I would just recommend that the speaker provide her testimony, and you say thanks, and we move on, rather than lots of dialogue about this.
And I guess the only other thing I was going to say is, from other projects that I've looked at, I think it's Nicholas Salas, his project, he was zoned Ag, he only went to residential large lot because he couldn't meet the setbacks for the house he wanted to build, so I'm unclear as to why, even though these lots may not be 10 acres, why rezone from Ag, I mean, Ag doesn't require 10 acres.
Okay, thank you.
It can be three, it can be one, I don't understand why it needs to be rezoned.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna start over with Commissioner Frazier, with any questions you might have.
This is just a general question, so, and I think I can ask at this point, so by rezoning them at Ag, would, does that allow, what would it allow you to do, or rezoning them, excuse me, as residential, like the similar, like the surrounding properties, could you build and do whatever you wanted to do now as opposed to previously?
Yeah, so currently, the, this all started by submitting the minor plat application for the lot line shifts, however, because the parcels did not meet the minimum lot size for that zoning district, we could not pursue the minor plat until they conformed to all standards, so that is what originally triggered the rezoning to R1. We do have approval conditions that the minor plat be approved and recorded prior to any building permits, however, again, there are no development proposals at this time, based on the setbacks for R1, they are far less restrictive than the setbacks for Ag, so should in the future they ever want to have an accessory shed, or garage, or any other structure, it would have much less restrictive setbacks in development standards because of those smaller lot sizes.
And again, to be consistent with the surrounding.
Yes, of course, for that as well, yeah.
Got it, got it.
It's within this entire existing neighborhood.
Got it, thank you.
I have one more comment, can I make one more?
We've already moved on from public comments.
Well, my concern would be, are there nonconforming?
We've, we've already moved on, we're ready for commissioners to make comments, if there are any, or a motion on the application. I think we're ready.
Chair. I recommend for approval, application PL 2025-058, rezoning from Ag to R1, 3609 Southwest Prior Road, 3613 Southwest Prior Road, 3699 Southwest Prior Road, 3620 Southwest Crane Road, and two abutting addressed, addressed parcels, applicant Michael King and Richard
I second that. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Cherry Frazier.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right, our application has been approved, even though you called your neighbor stupid.
No, I said he was dumb.
Oh, that's right, I'm sor, I'm sorry.
That would be true.
But see, you caused this domino effect and got a whole bunch of stuff fixed, so, or you're on your way to getting it fixed, so, thank you. All right, we will move on to application PL 2024-303, special use permit, renewal for auto sales, service, and repair, Auto Dreams 13, or 1231 Southeast Century Drive, Auto Dreams LLC applicant. For anyone that would be here to testify on behalf of this application, if you would stand up, be sworn in at this time.
Your house is on 30th and 11th, Senator.
All right, thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant?
I'm Josh Williams, owner of Auto Dreams LLC, 1231 Southeast Century Drive, I'll defer to staff for the presentation for now, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. We're keeping you busy tonight.
Okay, Claire Byers, Senior Planner, please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of exhibits one through 13.
Exhibit A, one through 13, noted and entered into the record.
The applicant requests the renewal of a special use permit to allow the continued operation of automotive sales, and also requests the special use permit approval to allow major automotive repair services. The site is zoned planned industrial, the properties surrounding are primarily industrial and include the East Side Business Park and the 50 Highway Office Park, the parcel directly south of the site is zoned CP1, and there is an existing landscape buffer between those uses. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan promotes various strategies to build long-term economic prosperity in the city's economy. Approval of the subject SUP application supports the continued economic viability of the site by broadening the range of allowed uses offered to the public. The applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on December 19, from 6 to 8, one member of the public attended, and according to provided notes, the discussion included the renewal process, the current business, and future plans for covered parking. Staff has not received any comments, emails, or phone calls in favor or opposition. During the application process, staff identified concerns with site conditions and conditions of approval granted as part of the 2015 original special use permit approval. Per Ordinance 7607, no onsite automotive repair service activity shall take place without the appropriate city approvals, including, but not limited to, compliance with the UDO, Fire Code, and Building Code requirements. The site is not in compliance with the previously approved SUP due to the operation of major automotive repair services without appropriate city approval. The applicant and owner of the property has acknowledged that onsite automotive repair services were added to the business in 2020. The inclusion of repair services on the property and other upgrades to the site were done without the knowledge of the city. However, the applicant is now working with staff to rectify the violations and bring the site into full compliance with all codes and ordinances. So regarding the vehicles parked on a gravel surface, the applicant has an approved final development plan as of May 16, that includes removing the gravel and installing a new concrete parking service, surface, as well as a covered parking shade structure. The existing wall signage was found to be installed without a permit, but the applicant has since obtained an approved sign permit. A change of use permit was not on file to include the addition of major automotive repair work, but a change of use permit is in plan review status and pending this special use permit approval. This is the final development plan, showing the proposed concrete parking service in a dark gray, with the parking shade structure in the bottom right corner over those six spaces. And with the conditions of approval below, the applicant, application meets the goals of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan and the UDO. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. All right, we will, do we have any comments on this application from the public? All right, we will move on to questions from the commission. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Frazier?
With the addition of, it looks like, new services that may be offered, do you anticipate an increase in FTEs?
Okay.
For this, okay.
Sorry, can you tell me what FTEs are?
I'm sorry, employees.
Oh, employees? No, we just have one full-time employee and one part-time employee, in addition to myself.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been doing auto repair, basically, since 2020, we're just going through the formalities now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. What is the, this is for the applicant, sorry, what is the use of the shade awning?
So we've been selling vehicles since we've moved into that building and built it, what we wanna do is add shaded parking for our sales vehicles, so that they're parked on concrete and then protected from hail, rain, you know, bird droppings, things of that nature.
So no anticipated repair outside and under the awning?
Oh, no, absolutely not, that all takes place inside.
Okay. I'm assuming, since you're going to major automotive repairs, that you've done the proper upgrades to the interior of the building as well?
Yes. And just to kinda clarify, we don't do a ton of major auto repair as it's defined in the city ordinance, most of what we do is minor auto repair, but we do occasionally do some major auto repair, yeah.
Mr. Tuzinski?
Ma'am Chairman, I guess, my, my, just a quick question, kinda bill no, Commissioner Benbrook was asking is, is like, what is the, what is the major type of product that you sell or that you do, I mean, is it just purely maintenance, or is it like a performance shop, or what, like, what is it, maybe just explain your business a little bit?
Sure, yeah, we, we sell vehicles, we sell used vehicles, and in addition to that, we just do general, general auto repair, yeah, alignments, tires, things of that nature too, yeah.
Perfect, thank you, ma'am chairman.
So I know that there, there was a, there's a request to, staff initially proposed a six-month timeframe for, to have the gravel removed and the repairs made, but you requested a little bit longer, can you explain why?
Just this whole process, I, it started probably two and a half years ago, we're now just getting to this point, so I'm just needing a little extra time to make sure everything gets done on time, yeah.
Okay, this, can, can I get the slide with the violations?
I do also have a additional slide I can pull up with the site history from the staff letter, if you'd prefer.
That one, yeah, that's the one I remember from the packet. No, you have it, don't you? That's okay, it's right here. Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we've got in December 14th, 2020, violation issued for parking lot expansion and parking vehicles on gravel surface. Was the gravel brought in by, did you bring in gravel to create that surface and put it over grass?
When we added automotive service, we obviously needed additional parking right away. When we added it, we thought it was during COVID, so our primary business dropped significantly. So we needed to add something to supplement our business. So we brought in additional gravel so that we could park cars as necessary because our parking's pretty small there.
Okay. All right. And so violation again on December or September 21st, 21, August 1st, 22, and we've got it again on February 3rd, 2025. Staff, I think this is for staff, and I don't know who, because it's probably, it's, it's concerning the violation, the enforcement part of that, I guess. When this happened, I assume that some, can someone give me the process of what happens when there's a violation and explain that?
So when there's a violation in the property, our neighborhood services code officers will go out there and inspect the property, either substantiate the complaint or the violation, or find it, that it's not in violation. So for this particular type of violation, the goal is compliance, not so much punishment. So by removing the vehicles off the gravel, he comes into compliant with the current code because the violation is parking on the gravel. By continuing to replace them on that gravel, he comes back into compliance. So at this point, we're in that process of, and that's why the stipulations are in there as they're written, is either pave, pave it or remove the gravel. So we're kind of, the staff is at the point where we want final disposition of, of the gravel parking lot and, and cease the back and forth.
Okay. Okay. And so that's made very clear to someone when this is, when this happens. I mean, it's, I don't want to make comment other than these violations happen time and time again, and we are, we're working toward a resolution.
Can I just add, that's what this whole thing is.
Right, right.
That's what I'm building is to try to come into compliance with everything.
Okay. So I'm just going to ask the question, after the first violation, I assume, I guess what I'm getting at, did the city suggest that you pave it? And what was the hesitation to not do that if that was the case? I guess that's what.
No, I mean, I just moved him off at that point in time when we're in a position to do that. Like I said, this whole process started, as far as the development, about two and a half years ago. So I've been in constant contact with the city and the gentleman that comes out and checks on it and told him, like, we've begun the process, so it just takes time, as you guys know.
Okay. All right. I have, well, I guess I have a question. Special use permit. What's the minimum special use permit we can, we can provide? Is there no, I, I just want to know, if we don't want to do five years, what can we do?
The commission is free to make a recommendation on what they see fit. The UDO does not establish a minimum. There is, if the five years is to be granted, we do have that five-year review process, as well as we do have a revocation process as well that we could evaluate. If we do continue within that five years to have violations, we, we could go evaluate revoking a special use permit and going down that path as well.
Can, can conditions be placed for increased frequency of inspections?
That is probably not a condition that we could place in the ordinance, but it's something that staff can put on their radar and, and we do have proactive code enforcement, so we can definitely take guidance from the commission and the council for that.
Okay. Okay. So before we go to, oh, you have a question? Yes. Commissioner Traptan?
I was just trying to look through, what is the timeline to get the parking lot? I know you said things are taking time, and I'm guessing getting construction on.
We've got a building permit almost ready to go, subject to special use permit approval. The building's sitting on my parking lot, waiting to be erected. So I can't imagine it'll take much longer than eight months from start to finish, but that's what I'm asking for.
Oh, okay. Great. Yeah, that's what I was curious about. Okay. Thank you, sir.
So would the, would the parking lot be the last thing constructed?
Yeah. So the, the plan would be to first put up the covered parking. We're going to kind of do it in, in slight phases, and then the rest would be the, the additional parking. Yes.
Okay. Because eight months from now, we're looking at February, I just don't think that's a good time for a parking lot. So that's, that would be my fear. But do we have any more questions from the commission? Sure.
How, this is more education for me. How are these violations being identified? Is this someone calling into report? Are these being done through inspections?
There's multiple ways that we identify violations proactively as a code enforcement drives by. We do take complaints as well. So there, it's a multitude of ways. I believe most of these were complaint-driven.
Okay. Any, oh, I guess I do have one. So the preliminary, or the, the, you approved a final development plan, staff did. That was presented by the applicant. Okay. And so you administratively can approve that because, because, why?
The final development plan meets all UDO requirements, so it's administratively approval.
Okay. Okay. I've got you. All right. So if we don't have any more questions, I, I want us, oh.
Sorry. Madam Chairman.
No, not at all.
This is for staff. I understand where this gentleman's coming from. He's got a business he's trying to do. We're asking him to pave something that he may not have funds to do because of COVID or for whatever reason. So now he's coming in front of us with a plan. Now, obviously, we take that as he's going to implement the plan, right? I mean, in good faith, he's coming to us. We've had staff that's gone out there multiple times, and granted, there's been multiple violations. Is there any way that we could just allow him to park? I think that's what he's asking for, just allow him to park on that gravel temporarily until the building is, is constructed. Because it's, why keep on sending our people out there for him just to move it off?
Part of the stipulation is a temporary approval of gravel parking lot for that eight-month construction period.
Right.
To allow that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
That's approval condition three on the slide right now.
I just want to let this gentleman, I mean, he's, he's trying to make it right. It seems like there's been some issues before, and I get COVID was a horrible time for a lot of people. So that's good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I just wanted to comment, just the eight months.
Wait. Is this a comment or a question?
I, can you talk to me again about how you came up with the eight months and where I'm going with this? Laying concrete when it's cold and eight months is up in February?
Well, eight months was several months ago. So now we're at eight months again, and obviously that, that equates to February at this point in time. But I'm hoping to get it done before winter, obviously.
Okay.
It's just, we're still in this process. I'm trying to just move it along as quickly as I can.
That being said, question, do we hold him to eight months? Period. Eight months. My question makes sense? Okay.
The eight months is, would be a hard cutoff in there because it's, it's significantly, I mean, it's quantified, right? Eight months. Just for education purposes, you can lay concrete in February. There's methods to do it. So, you know, the staff did work with the applicant back and forth on identifying what was a reasonable time to, to construct that building. Eight months is what we have acquiesced to. Staff started with a shorter time period, but to, to work with the applicant, we agreed to that eight months.
Okay.
And Madam Chairman and Commissioner Fraser, it just means that after eight months, he just can't park on the aggregate anymore. So maybe he's going to have to find another place to park for however long it takes, hopefully one month, because you can start pouring asphalt in March again. So.
Well, I think at a very minimum, we'll have the covered parking done by then. So that will help tremendously.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I ask for more comments, I want to, I will tell you, I, I believe in giving people grace, but I also believe we've had several violations, so I want it, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by making sure that it doesn't happen again. I think with, if, at first, I really didn't like the idea of changing it from six to eight months. Simply because the violations, the, the volume of violations and the time it takes for the city to, to enforce that is, is a lot. And also because when, in, in my opinion, I'm reading that and I, and I don't, I haven't seen the, the public hearing. I haven't been to the public hearing yet. And I'm thinking, if you're contrite about it, you're not asking for more. You're, you want to comply right away and get, get everything straightened out. So I would say if we do, if we do the, we do the eight months, but I still would like the special use permit to also be renewed at the end of that period. For the, and then we can go with a further period after you've proven that you are going to operate within our UDO. I, I just think it's real important, and I, I think it's important because we, we have these rules and we need to make sure that we're holding people accountable. And the, the special use permit actually gives us the one opportunity. It's not the only opportunity, but outside of enforcement, it does give us an opportunity to revisit these things. So that, that is my thought. Of course, this is going to be up for vote with the commission, but that's what I wanted to put out here as we start our discussion part of.
I would just remind the commission on the process of renewing a special permit, a special use permit is a four, a three to four-month-long process. So if the special use permit was limited to eight months, he'd have to start the renewal process again. You know, if we did.
Before he's even done?
Before, you know, so if, if it's limited to six months, he'd have to start the special use permit process again in two months. There is significant capital outlay that it takes to go through that process. So a six-month special use permit is, is very short. Again, we do have the revocation option if the continued violations do come to be an issue again, that we can go through that at any time during that five years.
Can I just add something here?
Sure.
The only violation I really have is parking cars on gravel, and that's exactly what I'm trying to fix. So.
And also, I, and I, I can, it was also the going from one type of business or adding another type of business, but I can also see how sometimes that can just happen.
Yeah, I wasn't aware. Yeah.
So, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess we, I think we need to talk about it, how we, what we want to do with that. I want to get everybody's opinion.
David does have another suggestion that may
Okay.
you obtain a little bit more comfortability with the, the request.
Okay.
So one thing that I thought of, and this may be, this is me attempting to put into words what I think you're getting at, which is it sounds like you're, you want condition three to be satisfied before the special use permit is granted.
I didn't think we could do that, though.
So one option would be, this gets a little more confusing, but a delayed effective date on the issuance of the special use permit in the ordinance until condition number three has been satisfied.
So he can still remain in business? I mean, that would, it wouldn't affect his ability to remain. That would be my concern.
So typically what we have done is typically what we have done in the past is continue to allow the business owner to operate while we're working through the process. So we would take the same approach here, that since he is working through that process, he can continue to operate until such time.
Okay. Well, that would be important. So, so then you would delay the start. We would approve the, we would, we would recommend for approval the special use permit, but have a delayed start date of it to give more time?
Well, so the one thing that we were just talking about is, the concern is operation of the business today in violation. So maybe the delayed effective date doesn't work, but I, it sounds like your concern is you want number three satisfied in order to move forward.
What's number three? Well, not necessarily. What I want to do is I, I just want to make sure we have some follow-up on it. And, and I, I do believe that you are coming here in good faith and trying to do it. I just want follow-up verification and just make sure going forward, it's all taken care of.
Additionally, and as well as talking, talking through this some more, part of the issue with the tenant finish permit and the building code permit is we can't get that issued until the special use permit is issued.
Well, yeah.
So it's a chicken before the egg.
And you certainly can't move on with the project without it.
Until we get this portion. So delaying the effective date would be ineffective for correcting the other issues.
Okay. Okay. So.
Good evening. Sorry, just one quick note, too. And Mr. Maguire was correct, you know, when he was saying not only the concerns would be with that, but also with making the special use permit for eight months. But what it sounds like to me also is that perhaps we want to work with the gentleman and keep things moving. Five years is a little bit too long. We, we could do two years. And so that way it gives a little bit of, you know, working with staff, and then the gentleman doesn't have to come back in right so quickly. But we would be back before you and then could report on, has everything been abated? Have there been any follow-up complaints or concerns filed with the city or things of that nature? And if everything's good, then give a longer timeframe, give a much longer timeframe, too. But just wanted to offer that instead of, as a different option than delaying the SUP.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, is, is it possible, and again, I really want to help us be working with business owners and to, I have this red tape and all this stuff, try to help eliminate that. Is it possible that we could do, like I said, a two-year, that if there's zero, zero issues, he, there's not one thing that comes back, that it automatically grants the five? Because I don't really want to have this gentleman have to come back in, apply, go through the whole process just to get three more years. But is there some way that we can do it says, hey, if there's no issues, it automatically goes to five instead of staying at two, and he's got to come back in?
Yes. Well, honestly, instead of just automatically coming to five, then if we come back in and everything's good to go, you all could make it seven years, eight years, 10 years. It would be within your purview to, to, to make whatever timeframe that you would like. You know, so we could have on the record, your, your desire is that, I don't know that I'd recommend making it an automatic, because you might have new commissioners and new things at that point in time. But you generally, you absolutely could make it for longer if everything's good. I think our standard typically has been between five and even 10 years. So you can make it for 10 years if you'd like. As well, and the first one was for 10 years, too.
That was my question. Was why are we suggesting five versus we give other auto dealers in the city a lot longer than five? I understand that there's a prevalent violation over five years with this business, but he is trying to fix the issue, and he's trying to run his business. And so I, I'm just trying to understand, how do we get to the five years?
We got to the five years because of the site violations that were reoccurring on the property and because of the use violations as well. It wasn't just a site violation with the parking, but a use and an operation. And so that is not untypical or atypical whenever we have history with a property that we shorten the timeframe because it also helps us from that enforcement standpoint. But we definitely, we didn't want to start with just eight months or one year because we do also want to work with the gentleman and with their business, too. And we understand business needs changes as well, and wanted to give him sufficient time. But that is just a recommendations, ultimately, your, whatever you all would like to recommend and forward on to city council. We'd be fine with it. Thank you.
If I may. The conditions of approval seem pretty well thought through, I think. I, I think five years is reasonable, and I think it gets this gentleman what he needs so he can improve his property and, and grow his business. And it gives us some checks and balances. So I would, I would think the five years would be a good.
No more comments.
Okay. Yeah, I echo Commissioner Benbrook's comments. I believe, I understand there's violation issues over five years. I am not supporting something less than five years. This gentleman's trying to get this fixed. I don't think we need to throw thorns on it. The city has made this recommendation. The staff are aware of it. There's a process in place. If he is unable to get this done, they said they could actually repeal it. So, you know, I, I actually think five years is too little. And so, you know, that's kind of where I'm at with this. So, thank you.
Madam Chairman, do you want to make a call to see if anyone wants to increase it from five years to additional? Since the commissioner brought it up?
Well, it who's making the motion on this? Oh, it's Jessica. No, it's actually, no. It's Commissioner Fraser.
It's me, it's me. If I could just make a final comment, I appreciate you suffering through our conversations up here. Sometimes we go round and round and don't ever get going forward. I think it's well written. I would like to make a proposal for improvement the way it is. And if everybody's okay with that, I think we've already spent way too much time on this. We need to let this gentleman grow his business. So with that being said.
Okay, so.
And I'm okay with that.
Okay with it?
I just don't want to shorten it because I feel like he's already getting a short stick, so.
Okay, Commissioner Fraser.
I move for approval of an ordinance approving the special use permit for.
Recommendation.
A recommendation for approval of a special use permit for land located at 1231 Southeast Century Drive for Auto Dreams LLC, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances.
We're just going to have her reread that. It's confusing.
I recommend for approval, application PL 2024-303, special use permit, renewal for auto sales, service and repair, Auto Dreams, 1231 Southeast Century Drive, Auto Dreams LLC, applicant.
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Cherry Fraser.
Yes.
Cherry Trafton.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes, and thank you.
Okay, and the motion is passed. Thank you. All right, we're ready for our last, our last application, PL 2025-123, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Article 8 Standards Pertaining to Architecture and Building Design and Article 15 Rules of Interpretation and Definitions, City of Lee Summit, applicant. Anyone that's planning to give testimony on this application, please stand up and be sworn in at this time.
There's so many presentations on this desktop tonight. It was, it's a good night. Good evening, Amy Nassif, Deputy Director of Development, here with Abby Eckberg, sorry, with Confluence to present our architecture and building design standards. I don't know if it's been 27 minutes or not, so I should have timed it actually just to see. And Hector left, and I wish Hector was here because he has all the fancy better words than I do for like the colors and the material and stuff. So Commissioner Benbrook, I'm going to already fail you, I know. But anyway, we're very excited to be here this evening to present these to you. It's a lot of hard work and wonderful opportunities for our city. So, you know, first and foremost, why are we here? Not just because it's things that staff identified and city council and planning commissioners identified, also our community stakeholders, our builders that we work with, but our comprehensive plan. You know, our Ignite Comprehensive Plan that we look to for everything we do has one of our great goals of promoting sustainable land use and meeting our needs and really wanting to look at the development quality. How are we growing? What does that look? What is our desired vision for the city? So with this project, we wanted to update our standards, enhance our building material requirements, continue to promote and clarify our expectations for that high quality development. We also really kept an eye on making sure that while we wanted to increase and update our standards and promote high quality, we also want to continue to be a choice of development for developers. We have a wonderful relationship with our home builders and our commercial builders in the city and a great reputation for our permitting and plan review process. So we're not looking to do anything to price people out of building here. And then, which may not seem like a lot to many folks, but to us, focusing on that building type and not having the district dictate what your building looks like is a great, a great change for us too. So we gave you all about 4,700 attachments tonight. So we were trying to give you the red line copy and then also a clean, a clean version so you could see everything. We hope it made sense, but we have everything here too, in case we need to look at any certain pages with you all. But this is just a summary of what the chapter updates are and what we did for each chapter. And I'll tell you that our last meeting that we had with the planning commission and also city council was super helpful, and about 90% of what you're going to see tonight is the exact things that was in our draft packet for you all. Because there was only a couple of changes and things that really had the discussion going last time. So I'm going to turn it over to Abby right now to start us off with the stakeholder engagement and get into some of those areas. And then also, I hope it made sense to everyone, the red line copies that we did, when we were getting into the code, it's kind of like pulling a thread on a sweater and they just keep pulling it, and then you're like, what did I just pull? And the whole sweater's gone. So when we were writing and updating the language, we realized there was a lot of areas of the UDO that needed just to be moved. So we didn't touch the requirements, and that's going to be to things that are more on the site design scale, like landscaping, lighting requirements, buffering, things of that nature. You'll see that all colorful in your packets. We just moved those to reorganize the UDO based on where things now needed to live with having a robust architecture section. So red language is brand new, green is it moved, black is we left it alone, so.
Thank you, everybody. As Amy said, my name is Abby Eckberg. I'm with Confluence here out of our Kansas City office. I will be just covering a few highlights here for you tonight, but again, touching on that stakeholder engagement. So back in November when we kicked this effort off, we did host a open house with the community. It was lightly attended, so we did supplement that through some stakeholder interviews where we got a lot of really great candid information from those that are actively developing in the community today, those that are actively using architectural design standards in other communities as well, just to get a better scale of temperament and use in those applications. We did have a couple of joint meetings with you all in the city council, one in December and one in April, as Amy had mentioned, the April one being very fruitful for us and kind of some final tunings of this, what you have in front of you here tonight. We did circle back with the stakeholders, here I am using corporate lingo, I apologize. We did speak with the stakeholders that we met back within November and December, really just to show them what their input helped us kind of guide and develop within those standards for them to utilize. Through some of the conversations back at the April meeting as well, we did host a meeting with the Home Builders Association in May and got some really great feedback from them that Amy will touch on in a future slide as well. So the really, the key themes that came out of that stakeholder engagement being there's a strong desire to maintain quality materials in the community. Quality materials mean longer lasting buildings, better looking facades, and so on and so forth. And so really focusing in there on that long term durability, making sure that there's a variety so that there's some visual appeal and variation throughout the community, as well as flexible standards. I think that's one thing that was highlighted throughout this entire process, is how approachable and flexible the city is to different developments and development types and being very open to application of standards and how to kind of vary that to get the variety that we're hoping to see in the built environment. So as Amy mentioned, anything in red is brand new, anything in green is just relocated in the code. So I'll just kind of jump into a couple of these items here for you today. So really the key one being planning residential district design standards went from subdivision two to subdivision four, so now it's its own area and very fun. So the next slides, again, as Amy mentioned, they haven't really changed since you last saw it back in April. There are a couple of things that we'll note throughout this presentation, but really just highlighting again, we did separate this out by building types. That is a critical factor in this consideration and really the definitions of when this kickstarts and when this starts to apply and where it starts to apply. So here's just some of the building types that we have here, really differentiating between the single family and two family residential, that is a pretty critical factor there. Not going anywhere near downtown, that is its own special district and has its own special subdivision regulations tied to that. And then really varying those out throughout the rest of the articles so that as we get through like building materials and applications and classes and so on, that those really start to take form. To pull Chris Shire's word here, we have the architectural truism. So really making sure that we have some variety in the architectural appeal of the buildings. And so you'll see in this graphic, the variation of the windows, the materials, the push and pull of the structure so that it is visually appealing and visually interesting. It's not just flat, four sided or flat, nothing to see there, kind of just windows and walls, and that's all you get. This is making, enforcing kind of some character and variety within the structure itself. Within the wall and roof articulations, again, just giving some variability in the height, making sure that the pitches kind of vary throughout, again, adding to the visual appeal of the structures themselves as they become grouped and in higher dense areas as well. This is one point from the April meeting that has evolved since you last saw it. So for building facadeism, that was discouraged at that meeting and that has been maintained through your feedback as well. The franchise architecture is now discouraged, whereas it was prohibited at that point in time. So adding again, a little bit of flexibility should an application come forward, that it could be considered and discussed and kind of evaluated at that point in time. For the general provisions of windows, looking in doors and commercial storefronts, really the critical difference is here being, we have clearly defined and made it a little bit better explained of what a commercial versus non-commercial looks like for those overhead doors. And so really separating those out, recognizing industrial users aren't likely to want or appropriately use a glass overhead door in their structures. Again, looking at the pedestrian view zone, so as people are moving throughout the spaces, what is in their eyesight so that they're visually able to engage with those storefronts and facades as well. And I'll pass it over to Amy.
Thank you. So the other kind of big topic of discussion that we had with you all in the city council at our joint session was the single family and two family design standards. So we, as you know, with all of our housing work as well, we are not recommending much if any, you know, stipulations or regulations on single family and two family for a variety of reasons. But so this is really the only, the main area that lived. Subsection A was presented to you all originally as a 50%, and subsection D did not exist. And so the idea at the April meeting was understood that, you know, why having some kind of a maximum on that garage door, you know, projection from how it would affect that front facade made sense, but what should that be? And is that something, what would our building community say about that? And so we did have our meeting, that was in middle of May with the Home Builders Association. And from those discussions, their feedback was, they completely understood having, you know, some language in the code and several cities do, but they had requested upping it from 50 to 60%. And that made sense. We went back and did a lot of research too and found on average around 55, 57% is what we're seeing. And the home builders agreed from lots of the models and the information they provided us with us too, that they said, hey, we can do, let's do 60%, that makes sense to us. And so for staff are like, yeah, that sounds great. And so that's where we changed that with their recommendation to 60%. And then the third car garages be recessed was actually a recommendation out of the Home Builders Association group that when they were meeting with us, like, hey, this is something that we are doing already is having a recess kind of limitation. So have you thought about codifying that? And we're like, well, no. So that was interesting, but really just shows how great the partnership and the collaboration with the HBA is. So one little typo that we did have is, we are going to be cleaning this up. There's some small little housekeeping items we're going to clean up as we get to city council. But one item here was, we want to change this. This was supposed to be a one foot behind the plane of the two car garage, not a two feet. That was just a typo miss and misunderstanding on our part. So, but that is again, something that we worked in partnership with and had the HBA support on. And then the other item in the section two, we originally have the illustration on your left here that has like the overhead view of what we're talking about for the total width and garage width. And upon looking at it back, and when you start to clean up the red lines, you start to see a lot, a lot better and more clearly is, we wanted to be consistent in our images. So instead, we're going to replace that with the image on the right so that it shows the home on that street facing view, and it's more of like a photo rendering instead of just like the Arc, Arcad, AutoCAD drawing. So just on those, is there any questions on anything we mentioned so far at all? Okay, then we're going to turn it back over for a second.
Thank you. So one really helpful item, or at least we hope that it'll be helpful for you all in your decision making as different applications come before you within these standards, is the use of these tables. And so hopefully these tables are approachable, they're quick references both for you as well as the developers that are utilizing them. So we have a variety of materials listed here from class one through four. Class one being your kind of top quality or most durable material types, class four being your lower quality, less durable material types. And so we have a variety of those just from what we've seen in the market, just providing some examples and what those could be, as well as anything that's not listed here in the code. It does identify and present that anybody in the director or their designee could go in and administratively incorporate that into the tables and kind of classify from there as well. So jumping in, even just looking at the commercial opportunities here, you'll see kind of the variation of major facade materials for class one and two and giving that percentage designation as to which that applies. Secondary facades, so again, thinking within that kind of bottom, or base body middle or base body top designation, I apologize, looking at class four. So you'll see throughout those tables that there are very few instances of class four materials as we're trying to, again, maintain that quality and kind of the more longevity of materials over time. So same, you'll see it hopefully pretty easy to follow throughout the rest of these. Again, they have not changed since the last meeting that you saw them in. And so this one, I will let Amy touch on here as well.
Yes, so for the last, we kind of mentioned in previously was for the last, I don't know, Shannon, what would you say? 15, 20 years? However long Hector's been here. 23 years. So the city originally had what we called a metal building area. And so any building in that area was, had no articulation requirements, no material requirements, and they were allowed to use 100% metal buildings. And so we did remove that in the code with an update back in December and instead replaced it with this like tier that you saw tonight. So you could use metal up to 40%, anything up to 75% required. Planning commission approval beyond that was city council. The original reason of removing the metal building kind of map in the area was we were getting tons of modification requests because metal use for any, a little bit more of trim or accents and things throughout the whole city wasn't being allowed. So when we removed it, we thought we were fixing things, but then upon hindsight realized, such as the gentleman this evening, that in our metal building area where it's nothing but all metal buildings, we accidentally said, hey, you can't do that anymore. So we were recommending putting that back in and reinstating that. However, with the caveat of, we were upping the game, so to speak, a little bit. So now, instead of just saying putting the metal building area back, in addition, we're saying you also still have to use no less than three different materials from class one, two, three, or four. So it could be a little bit of trim, it could be some glass, it could be something over your doorway, but we want something so that it's not literally just 100% on all four sides, nothing but that. I did catch wind that there was a concern about some, the footing of the building, right? And so perhaps there might be, and if the planning commission's desire is to do that, we can certainly update to add information that the building foundation, you know, for metal building areas should either be protected with bollards or some other use of item or use a class one, two, or three material along that, that bottom of the building to help protect the durability so that you don't have metal from the ground up unprotected, if that's something that comes up tonight. But so that's kind of where and how we came back in with that area. We can stop here if you like, or we can keep going to the end and then wait for questions, whatever you like.
Everybody looking at me. I don't know when we want to discuss it, but I'll just bring up the issue, right? Like 95% of all damage to metal buildings happens at the ground or at the doors, right? So how do we, when we're integrating, I mean, obviously Lee Summit's growing, right? And our residents and our more commercial areas are spreading into the industrial areas, we're budding them. Tonight was a perfect example. You know, we have a new building going in an industrial area that is right along a main thoroughwear, thoroughway as we discussed earlier. So how do we keep the building looking nice? You know, tonight was great. They were doing stuff to make it, to dress it up and make it look nice, and I fully support their efforts in that. But what language can we put in that says a more durable material has to be used within? But what language can we put in that says a more durable material has to be used within the 36 inches of the ground? I mean, we're not, my intent isn't to, as you stated earlier, price people out of this area. It's not what we want. We want businesses to come here and grow here. The project tonight, since, you know, we've referenced this a couple times, they already had that three-foot band around like 70% of the building. They were almost there. How do we just add that, that language to get it all the way around? And not limit it, like, I'm even okay with precast or cast-in-place concrete, you know, extending the stem wall, because you got a foundation there anyway, extending the stem wall up, you know, 36 inches. That's, that's my issue, my concern. Moving forward, the warehouse buildings would last a lot longer. They would have more value, they would be in service longer, and they wouldn't look so bad. That's my two cents.
I concur.
And just to clarify, that is in the metal building area we're speaking of, because otherwise throughout the rest of the city, metal's only a class four and it would not be, okay.
Correct. We're talking industrial applications.
Up Hamblin and the other areas on that. And we were also going to reinsert that map we used to have that showed where those areas were. Okay. Thank you. And then, so you want me to, would you like me to advance on the next slide? Okay, I'm going to tag out for a second.
So this is one of the locations that was just relocated within the, the regulations here. But again, just saying, anybody that is developing in an office or commercial district, looking for open space standards, accessibility, how a pedestrian would move throughout those spaces, pretty standard language here as well. For building-mounted equipment, so think your HVAC system's on top of a roof, any kind of utility boxes out in front of the site, making sure that those are screened from the visual eye as you're moving throughout the space, that you don't just look out and see those lovely green utility boxes just staring you, staring right at you. So making sure that those are screened from the, the visual plane there as well. For trash and recycling, the most glamorous of topics here, we have the trash and recycling enclosures, same thing for ground-mounted equipment, the placement and location. Again, I think the critical thing here is that this can't differ from the character of the building itself, it has to match, and so that is consistent on that site, does have to be recessed and not from the, the public view. So again, out of, out of the site view, but still has to match to the structure so it doesn't stick out too much. So the last thing to touch on here is we did kind of do a metro-wide analysis as well as a little bit beyond, looking at Franklin, Tennessee, and Carmel, Indiana, just seeing where does Lee Summit compare to our, our neighbors and beyond within these different regulations. As we mentioned, we did meet with those stakeholders, and so they provided some good input there with their experiences in these communities, too. But really, this does maintain that Lee Summit is a welcoming community for all development. This isn't going to price anybody out from being able to develop in the community and does make you all competitive within the market as well with what we're trying to include here.
When you're referring to prohibited materials.
Oops, sorry. Let me go back. There we go.
So we don't have any, is that what that means within this?
Within, yes. So that would be, and Amy, correct me where I go astray, the, in that classification of those materials that we have in those tables, nothing is clearly said to not be allowed in those. It is said if the director or their designee wants to incorporate something, they are able to do so there, but we don't have anything explicitly excluded from the code.
Okay.
So again, maintaining a little bit of that flexibility. If there's something new that comes on the market that isn't included in this, they can bring it forward and have that in that conversation, but as of now.
It doesn't mean they can just do anything.
Correct.
Okay. And so, and then colors regulated. They're.
We don't have any standards saying that that would be something we're looking to brand of sorts, correct?
I guess it gets a little confusing, that gets a little confusing because I know it's not regulated even now, but remember when we did the, the C store over on View High and we asked about the colors?
This isn't saying you can't ask about it or we can't see an elevation and be like, eh, bright pink, glow-in-the-dark green, we don't like that. You know, how we are approaching it is other buildings in the area, is it architecturally compatible? Does it fit in with the area? Is it going to create a nuisance? There are like one or two cities that might say you can't use bright, obnoxious colors or something like that, but so that's just not where we're going. That's what that means, that just synopsis there.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So maybe Overland Park and Franklin specifically, they have language specific to colors?
They have language in some certain sections of their area where they're like, they talk about a color, too. Yeah. And so like we do with everything, we kind of like to see where do we, where do we rank with our friends and families around in the area and stuff, too. And so we just wanted to show you all kind of what that end result would look like. And I did want to mention, too, and she better not be watching, is Adair Bright did a tremendous job on all of this with us, too. She's supposed to be on vacation right now. She was emailing me last night and again this morning, so I hope she's not watching and she trusts me. So but she did, she was very instrumental in this, and so was Chris Shires, of course, too. So but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess, anybody have any questions? Commissioner, you don't have any?
Yeah, Madam Chair, no real questions, but just, Amy, thank you, because that's exactly what I think, I know Commissioner Breck and I've talked about.
That Adair did a great job.
Yeah, Adair did a great job. And also that, and also that we want to have new businesses, new homes that come in, fit the surrounding area and not have one thing look like it's completely out of place. And I think that was one of our big things, especially on View High when we had that, that issue came in. We just wanted it, we didn't have any issues with the business, we just wanted it to fit in with the, with the, with the way, the feel of that area is. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the comparison, too. So we're always asking, well, how do we fit, you know, on the grand scheme of things? But thanks for providing that as well.
Absolutely.
I appreciate us being the newbie, as Chair pointed out today. It makes it easy for when you're coming in and trying to figure things out. So for anyone who's coming in and trying to figure out, what do we need to do, what do we not need to do, how does this work, and how am I doing my job right? It helps. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you to you all for all your feedback, too, throughout this whole process and the city council as well. I mean, it was very, so helpful. And even before we started this process and we were coming before you with different projects, and you all would ask questions, you know, at the, at the end of the evenings and such and be like, do we have this? Do we need this? Or why are we keep seeing this modification 20 different times? So we take notes on everything you say. But we do, and we try to really be responsive and listen to that and the needs of the city, so.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
And thank you, Adair, if you're listening.
You're welcome. And my only question would be like, when you do make your motion tonight, if you'd like to include the information on the metal building area, that way, what we would do then is add that to our staff memo for city council when they consider.
Do we add, I'm sorry. Do we add that as a stipulation or a variant, how would we verbalize that?
Sure. What we do is you can say, motion recommend with the additional language of additional class materials for the trim or base of the buildings or protective measures in the metal building area.
Get all that?
You could say a staff recommends if, with the changes to the metal building areas recommended by staff, if you like, then we just have a record of what I just said. I think Shannon wrote it down. And then what we do is we include that in our staff letter to city council and then for their consideration with everything, too. Thank you.
You could put that just in the regular motion.
While they're figuring that out, I'll just say, thank you, guys. Thank you, staff, for the deep dive into making these corrections and, you know, the use of consultants in this to bring in a broader perspective. So I appreciate it. It's going to make our community better, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for being patient with me. I know I'm a total pain, but, you know.
No, you're not. You are not at all. Very, it's very helpful. We'd rather have that information, have those questions and stuff than just like walk around thinking everything's great when it's not. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to, going to go ahead and make a motion now. All right, we're ready.
All right, Chair. I recommend approval of application PL 2025-123 Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Article 8, Site Standards Pertaining to Architecture and Building Design, and Article 15, Rules of Interpretation and Definitions by the applicant city of Lee Summit, to, with also including the recommendations by staff for the metal building area.
Do we have a second?
A second?
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Cherry Frazier?
Yes.
Cherry Trafton?
Yes.
Nowarth?
Yes.
Jessica Grinow?
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
All right, the motion has passed, and we will move on to roundtable. And I know.
All right, so I have the over-under at 7:13, so I got four by six, seven minutes.
You had what? You had us at 7:13?
7:13. So just a couple of things from staff, roundtable, the application period for the 2026 Charter Review Commission is open. Board members are eligible to participate in that. So later, today or tomorrow, I will send out an email with some information and the link to that application process, just for your information. Each council district will have three commissioners on that board. Each one commission, or one council member will get to nominate one, the other will get to nominate the other, and then the third one will be nominated jointly between those two council members as well. So for those who don't know what the commission does, it kind of helps, it looks at the Lee Summit Charter, which acts much like the US Constitution and kind of dictates of how we, how we govern ourselves and goes to the kind of our home rule, foundation of how we operate. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for the commissioners or other residents to participate and shape the future. It happens every 10 years, so this one will go through, it'll be adopted, and then it won't happen again for another 10 years. So it's a good opportunity, so.
Isn't the deadline August 15th?
I believe somewhere around there. I don't have that in front of me, but I can get, get that information to you as well.
Okay.
So, so. One other piece of information, just take a moment to introduce Tracy Albers, Albers, in the back there. She is our new department director. She comes to us by the way of Georgia. She is a Huskers fan, so don't hold that against her.
She'd like to make a 10-minute speech, though, so the time goes on longer so that we win.
Uh, no, we got five minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Tracy Albers with Development Services. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. Yes, my family comes most recently from Atlanta. Before that, we spent about 17 years in Southern California, but I originally herald from Lincoln, Nebraska. So traditionally, I know that the Community Development Director doesn't attend planning commission meetings, but first of all, it helps me get the lay of the land, both of the commissioners and staff. And also, I am a planner by trade. I don't know what I would do with myself if I didn't have Thursday evening planning commission meetings to attend. And admittedly, maybe I do a little bit of shopping on the way home that my husband is not privy to, neither here nor there. In eight days, I have learned two things. Number one, you're in very capable hands with staff, and staff is in very capable hands with each of you. So thank you, it's a pleasure, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Trafton has something.
Well, Shannon didn't know that I was, I have a presentation because I.
Four minutes.
I'm going to take at least four minutes. I was in a two-hour meeting, so, and some of you were in that meeting with me. So I had the privilege of attending the Community Economic Development Committee as the liaison from the commission of planning. And so I thought I would brief you. There's lots of things happening in the community, in the community development area, and so they are recommending an ordinance to change the alcohol beverage ordinance of the city. And so basically, they're adding language to make it, you know, prohibit, I guess would be the right word, dispensing or giving away alcohol without appropriate documentation. Let me see, so I've got.
What's an example of that?
Well, they didn't get into all of that, so I guess it's advanced to city council for further presentation and discussion. I think they, and, and, yeah, Mr. Bouchak was there.
I think the main concern with that amendment, the, the main concern that was trying to be addressed was the particular section they were looking at only had the word "serve", and they wanted to expand it to "serve", "sell", "giveaway", I think there's another word. So it was just an expansion of any sort of dispensing of alcohol, selling, giving away, serving, et cetera. That was the main focus.
So, just tightening it up, yeah. So, yeah, the other thing is they're updating the panhandling, loitering, and soliciting ordinances. They're actually going to draft an ordinance for that. So they're in the comment phase, so if you have comments, who was the lawyer? I forget his name last night.
Dr. Ed Rucker in the law department gave a great presentation yesterday.
Oh, Dr. Rucker?
Yes. He is a doctor.
Yeah, he is, he is on it. He knows a lot. I learned a lot from him last night. But essentially, they're looking to restrict panhandling that's aggressive. And if you don't know what aggressive panhandling is, it's when I ask you a second time to give me some money for a soda or something, or food, cigarettes, alcohol, whatever. And so, yeah, they're, they're just trying to tighten the language up. They're, they're also looking at the data around, you know, what kind of an issue is this? They're really looking at the downtown Lee Summit area, the parks across the community, and our lovely New Green Street, across the street, which is in downtown, so it seems a little redundant. But, you know, there isn't really a massive problem for this in the community, although, you know, there is some of this activity. I've seen it around town occasionally. But, so anyway, if you wanted to comment on that, you have an opportunity to do so. And I forget, oh, it was Captain Rob Schaefer, who is heading that initiative up with the police department. So he was very informative about it and knowledgeable and is happy to receive comment about it, as is Dr. Rucker, so. The third and final thing, so I'm doing pretty good here, the World Cup, if you didn't know, was coming to Kansas City, not Lee Summit, but near Lee Summit at Arrowhead Stadium. There's a debate as to how many thousands of people are really going to be here for that in the community. I think it weighs heavily on what, what games we actually get from what countries. So if you're rooting for Germany or Brazil, you know, you can do that. But the city proactively has looked through all the city ordinances, and there's five pages of these things. We went through them line by line. Mr. McGuire had the opportunity to speak on some of them, and so did many other city staff. They've done a, they're, they're doing their due diligence. There are some things they're restricting and going to be prohibiting as far as like tightening up the regulations around. And so if you're interested in that, they're also in the comments phase of that. I think Mr. Soto was taking some comments last night, but, you know, kind of some hot topics just for you to be aware of are food trucks on city, city streets may be prohibited. So in your neighborhood, if you want to have a food truck at an event you're hosting on a private property and it being on a city street, that would be prohibited, and you would not be able to get a permit for that. Also, don't plan on having any fireworks displays during that timeframe, which is about 45 days, I believe, mid-June through July. And so they are moving the Fourth of July fireworks display to the third because, or, yeah, I noticed, yeah, the, the second, because there's a game on the third. So we don't know who's playing in that game, but we don't want our fireworks display to conflict with that because of the, the public safety issue, really. It's about having people on our streets and utilization of our police force because they may be required in other parts of the city while still trying to protect our community. So.
Quick follow-up question, clarification.
Quick follow-up question, clarification. Are we talking like citizens will not be allowed to light off fireworks, or are we talking large, like, commercial displays?
Commercial, like, large displays, like, there were two specifically mentioned outside of the one the city does, or the Parks and Parks Department does, which is Rain Tree and Lakewood, which would both be prohibited, so.
So there'd still be setting up tents and selling for citizens, but this is just a restriction around large commercial?
Yeah, I don't believe they're restricting any of that, is that true?
That is correct. The restriction would be anything that would require a permit or special use permit, or special event permit that would require staffing on the public safety side or fireworks side. We just potentially may not have the resources to provide that staffing, given the projection of people that will be in, in attendance to the World Cup. So we're kind of looking forward to see, okay, how can we best serve the community with the limited resources we have, because it's not just Lee Summit, it's every city in the metro, so there are mutual aid agreements, so typically, if we're short-staffed, we could call in other cities to help us out, and that's not going to be an option, because everyone else is going to be short-staffed as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I mean, those are just the highlights. I mean, I don't know how many ordinances or UDOs there were, Shannon. There were five pages, so had to be north of 50, but I wasn't counting and they weren't numbered, so I think that document is available online if you're interested in it, so, but there's a lot of things they're not touching, so just, just to be aware of that, and, did you just lose your bet? Okay, sorry about that.
But that's all right, we're after 7:15, so Mr. Bushak lost as well.
Oh, okay. Well, as long as I can help Amy out in any way, so. That's my report. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Trafton. Anybody else? All right, we will adjourn at 7:17.